Frederick Greening, City of Cottonwood Planning and Zoning Commission order. Meeting for June 17, 2019. Thank you, sir. We have a number of you speak, that's good. We're glad to see you here. First order, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hart?
President.
Commissioner Dowell?
Here.
Commissioner Dowling?
Here.
Commissioner Norwood?
Here.
Commissioner Sherman Abson? Vice Chairman Wasden Abson? Chairman Williams?
Here.
Okay, our next item is the approval of minutes for the May 20, 2019 regular meeting. Do I hear any additions, corrections? We're okay?
Barring any additions, I move we approve the minutes. It's a May 20 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Darwood seconds. Mr. Dowling's motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Call to the public. I don't have any slips up here, this is usually for items not on our agenda tonight. If anybody would like to address us on any item not on the agenda. I see any hands? Okay. Good. Go on to the next order. We haven't got any old business, which is good. And our first order of new business is CUP 16-004 MOD Terra Vienna, a request for extension of approval date of the project. Yes, James?
Thank you, Chairman Williams. We received a request from the applicant that this item be continued or tabled to the July 15 Planning Commission meeting so that she would be here to be able to address questions and concerns that the commission may have. So in order if that is going to be what you choose to do, we would request that you go ahead and open the public hearing and table that to the date specific of July 15 so that staff doesn't have to go through any additional advertising or posting of that. So should you decide that that's the direction you want to go on her request, that's what staff would ask for.
All right. Okay. The applicant's not here, so we just need to discuss this one.
I have no objections to being taken here.
I have no objections. I would approve it tonight, but otherwise.
Yeah. We'll just extend it. We'll do this next month.
No objections.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Dowling, I'll ask you to make a motion to table this.
Let's see then.
I think you need to open it.
Okay, well, okay, we opened it up.
Right.
Okay, in our discussion, we better discussion, I think. I think we're ready for a motion to table.
I move that we table, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yes, that's what I was, that you open the public hearing.
All right.
And then continue that or table that item to the July 15 meeting.
Well, we, okay, it was open. The applicant isn't here.
Okay.
Right, and I don't have any items for anybody to discuss this.
Okay.
So I closed it, and now we're ready for a vote.
I would move that we table PCU 16-004 MOD time extension until July 15.
July meeting is fine.
July, okay, July meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Dowell, second to Commissioner Dowling's motion. Brenda, roll call, please.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye. You can have the carrying. We'll see you next month. Okay, next item on the agenda is CUP 17-003 and DR 17-003 Circle K requesting extension of their time limits as well, as I understand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission. This is a request for a time extension. As you know, in June of 2017, they received a conditional use permit and design review approval with a condition that they apply for their building permits within 12 months. They had issues acquiring the properties, it took longer than they had anticipated, so another extension was given to them in June of 2018 for 12 months, and now they are on the verge of submitting documents to get their building permits. However, they're still working out the abandonment of the alley and the utility easement, so that's the only thing that's holding them up right now from meeting that requirement. So they're requesting another extension to get that done.
Okay, how long extension?
They said at least six months. They think that they can get submittals done this month or next, at the latest.
All right. Is there, is the applicant here tonight, or?
I didn't see if they came in or she busted out.
Oh, he didn't. You give us your name, please.
Tracy Rodell with Land Development Consultants.
Okay, do you have anything to add over that?
I do have one thing to add that I confirmed today. The existing goodwill that is still there, they are in a lease with Circle K right now through the end of September, and will be vacating that building in mid-October.
Okay.
So, and I will be submitting our first submittal construction documents first week of July at this point in time.
All right. So you think six months will be adequate enough, or do you want to, should we do it 12 months and give you, did you run across anything else?
Just do in case.
What would be?
I'd say do 12, just in case, just because goodwill won't be out until October.
All right.
So we might, I mean.
They may be delayed.
Right.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So.
Okay. Commissioner, any questions?
No, as near as I can tell, the, all the issues that are holding them back are not anything of their own doing, it's just, you know, the bureaucracy is trying to find a way through, so I think it's reasonable.
Any questions, okay, no questions of the applicant?
No, sir, I think everybody's just excited to get the project going, I keep hearing, once it going up, once it going up.
Any questions, any questions?
None here, seems pretty cut and dry.
I think, yeah, it's pretty cut and dry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I'll open it to the public, anybody from the audience have any comments they would like to make? Concerns? All right. Seeing none, I'll close the floor. Yeah, you can just go ahead and sit down now, thank you. Okay, Scott, I think we're, we could close it up and have comments.
I don't have anything else.
All right. Again, I think you've commented.
I think, I think their request is reasonable, they've just had some unusual stumbling blocks, none of their own.
12 months.
And so I think 12 months is reasonable.
Yeah, good, sir.
Mr. Darwood?
12 months is very reasonable, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I agree.
I second that.
All right.
Mr. Dowell, I'll have you make a motion for us, please.
Let's see here, I move that we approve the 12-month extension for project proposal PCU 17-003 MOD and DR 17-003 MOD for Circle K.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
Aye.
Mr. Hart, seconds that motion. Brenda, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye. Motion carries nationally?
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. All right, next item on the, is a design review, 19-008 for the Habitat for Humanity, design review for a 3,000-square-foot modular office building. Here's Mr. Page.
Thank you again, Chairman Williams. As you stated, this is a design review for Habitat for Humanity. Their plan is to locate six modular storage buildings, combining them into one 3,000-square-foot facility at their location at 737 South Main Street. It is a C1 zoning, which is like commercial. Portions of that would be visible from both Highway 89A and, or Main Street and Villa Colors that they'll be using are three different colors, there's a green, a beige, and a red color, there's a sample here in just a moment. They will be doing some minor paving and resurfacing for the additional parking area adjacent to this new facility, and landscaping and parking exceed the minimums as required by code. This would be the elevations of the building, basically it's going to end up being a, roughly a square shape. You won't recognize that it's an individual unit once it's, once they are combined into The existing Habitat Restore is in this location, they'll be taking their access off of Villa Drive through a one-way drive and then back out onto Villa Drive, so their parking, additional parking that they'll be providing is in this location. The new building will be located here, and as you, if you've been out there, there's sort of a, an array of retail items that are stored out in that location, so this will help not only with their additional office space, but also to visibly make that location a little bit more pleasing. These are the, actually five of the modular buildings that are the ones that will be combined, so they're not going to look, once the project is complete, this rough look will, will be Here are the, the colors that they'll be using, Fairbank Green will be the main body, some trim being the beige, and then some accent colors of Cherokee Red. That concludes what I have to say, the applicant, Gary Rideout, is here this evening, so should we have any questions of him, he'll be available, if you have any questions for staff, available as well.
Okay, just run quick. These are the modular building owned by the city?
No.
No, they were donated by APS?
APS, okay.
They have been stored for a good two or three years on, on the Public Works, the City of Cottonwood.
Oh, okay.
Yard, but they, only waiting for this project, they're not donated by the city.
Okay, they're, they're donating to APS, okay. Mr. Hart, you have any technical questions of Jim, or do you want?
No, not right now, no. I don't have any.
Jim, technical questions for Jim? Okay, fine, the applicant, representative, and your name, sir, please.
My name's Gary Rideout. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Tell us a little bit about what you're doing, and maybe elaborate a little bit more.
Yeah, sure, like Jim was mentioning, the, those were FEMA trailers donated by APS. Currently, right now, the restore itself lacks space, so they've been using a lot of the exterior outside parking lot area for storage for their resellable items, so what they intend to do is move those modular units to that location on the site plan, they'll be obviously put together as one, power will be brought to them, we will be adding a sidewalk on Villa, actually those aprons will be made of concrete 20 feet wide, something that the fire department and city requested, as well as the sidewalks. Landscape barrier, it will all be ADA, this handicap parking, and this will be one-way coming in off of Villa. And other than that, you know, we'll take a, pretty much a blight right now with, you know, a lot of the used construction items that are out there. They've already started cleaning the back area, and they fenced the back area, so where the modular units will be is completely cleaned out, and pretty much where the parking spaces are showing, showing on the site plan, there's already a concrete, existing concrete pad that we feel that we'll be able to repurpose as the parking, and then we'll be paving the entire parking lot, which needs, needs that very badly, as well as, not part of this, this project, but, you know, the roof needs, needs a new roof on the actual existing building, also needs HVAC system, heating and cooling system, that'll be part of an ongoing process that will be pulling permits. Again, painting of the exterior of the modular units, wheelchair accessible, wheelchair ramp, and that's pretty much the scope of the project.
Okay. So those AC units we saw in those pictures, those that are mounted on the walls, those will come off?
No, those will stay, those will be there.
Okay.
To heat and cool, I'm talking about the main building, the restored.
Oh, the big main building?
The existing, yes, sir, the existing building.
Okay. All right. The back.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, those, those are, sir, all right.
Yeah, and once they're placed, the company that we've received a bid from, the name's PacVan, you know, they have to be tied down, secured, it will, it will be skirted all the way around, so you won't see the wheels, you won't see the, underneath the framing or anything like that, so, and be nicely landscaped.
Right.
And safe. So the, the plan is for the executive offices, the board, et cetera, the office will be the modular units, which will open up the entire restore for, for further merchandise.
For more merchandise, things like that. Oh, that sounds good. Mr. Hart, any questions of the applicant, please?
Okay, so, just to be sure, the air conditioning units are going to be, they're still going to be on the units, but they're going to be on the walls opposite the street?
Correct.
Okay.
They'll be towards the big five, in the back, in the big five, you won't see those from the street.
Okay, thank you.
Love them.
Anything else, sir?
No.
I don't have any questions, sir.
Pretty straightforward.
Mr. Darwood?
No, I just had one question, Mr. Rideout, on the buildings, because they're mobile-type buildings, once they're in place, does that revert back to a permanent structure then? Is that, is that how that works? Because they have wheels and, you know, because there is a difference between?
Yeah.
Mobile versus permanent relative to tax purposes?
Correct. You know, that question has been posed for appraisal purposes, because I know Habitat has refinanced the, the whole entire property to help fund this project. Tanya Sims, the executive director, would probably be better to answer that question. I don't know at this time. I know they have to be tied down with, with concrete, you know, it's, it'll be, there'll be jacks as well, so I'm not sure if it's permanent structure or considered like a mobile home, or the wheels are still on it. I believe the wheels do come off, though.
Okay.
But I can certainly get the answer to you for that.
I was just curious, that's all.
Okay. We normally limit these to a timeframe, so they just don't go on in perpetuity. How long do you think to get it completed at this point? Are you ready to go, or is it?
Yeah, we're ready to go.
So six months would be?
Yeah, our next step would be to pull, you know, to obviously apply for the proper permits.
Right, okay.
And we would send out, we would start soliciting for, for bids.
All right, all right. So six months would be enough, or do you need maybe a little more, or just?
I, we would feel comfortable with six months.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, real fine. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's the right time or not, but one of the, we would like to request at some point, the, the permit fees, if the city would be open to waiving those in, for consideration, one of the things that the fire department had brought up that they'd like to see, one of the things we're going to need to do to those units is we're going to have to sprinkle them, fire sprinklers there, but there's a storage area right about where it says existing structure on that site plan, that's where they store their doors and windows. We would be certainly open to sprinkling that part of the project, which is not part of this project here, in consideration for, in lieu of any permit fees, just wanting to see if that would be something.
I think that, that's something that maybe they, talk to our city managers here tonight, maybe.
Okay.
It'd be something more to the city council would have to, we don't have any authority to waive fees.
Okay.
Okay, that's not our purview.
All right, no problem.
Okay.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
No, that's, that's okay, that, I agree. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, do I have anybody in, from the audience who is speaking for or against this project? I don't have any slips, so I will close the floor to the public, and, Mr. Hart, you want to start with comments?
Are we, are we had questions or comments?
We're at comments now, we're through.
I think it'll be a nice addition to the area, I mean, it's kind of, kind of a groovy area back there, and, you know, getting some landscaping and, and just some, some area that isn't chain-linked fenced with pieces of board there, I think it'll be an improvement.
Okay, okay.
I've been in his facility quite a few times in the last month, I've spoken to manager quite a bit about this project. I think it's a very good project, the project's kind of near and dear to my heart because my grand, my great uncle built that original building for William Chevrolet. They're going to do some roof repair and stuff like that, so it's going to need to see the building isn't going to go away, and you're going to actually get some office space in the back, so I like the project, and I think it's actually going to help beautify the area.
Mr. Darwood?
No comment.
No, I was just going to ask for clarification, you said the driveways are going to be 20 feet per the fire department request, and the plan right now shows them at 16, I just want to make sure that, that I don't approve a sheet that says 16, and then somebody comes back and says it's supposed to be 20, so I wanted to just clarify or verify that. Other than that, I think it's going to be a good use of existing equipment and projects.
When they submit their plans to come through, building plan check, that would be something to meet the minimum.
All right.
Drive off.
Okay. Basically, I think this would be a good addition, great use of those buildings, add some office space which you desperately need down there, and help clean up that site, which will be good for the town, I think, and, basically the plan looks pretty good, so, Mr. Dowell, Dowell, I'll have you make a motion with the stipulations.
All righty, I'll, I'll pretend I'm Mr. Wasden for the night.
Yes.
I move that we approve project number DR 19-008, the Habitat for Humanity, with the following stipulations, that the project is developed in conformance with the development plans as approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission at the June 17, 2019 meeting, that the project conforms to code review board comments dated May 9, 2019, that the project comply with all building engineering and fire department requirements, a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of conditions shall be issued by the timeframe specified, in this case, six months.
We don't need the last one, no?
What's that?
We don't need the last one.
Gotcha.
Okay, do I have a second to this motion?
Second.
Mr. Darwood, seconds, Commissioner Dowling's motion, Brenda, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
And Chairman Williams?
Aye. You can actually carry it. Good luck.
Thank you.
We look forward to the project. Jim and Scott, I'd like to possibly take my prerogative as chairman to amend our agenda just to, is the Foleys here, or representative for the?
Yes, the applicant is here.
They're at here?
Yes.
It looks like our item 19-003 is going to have a lengthy discussion, we've got a number of comments, and I'd like to reverse those two items to, so the Foleys don't have to sit, I don't, I think that's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
So that we can, we'll, we'll swap those two when we get to them.
I don't see them complaining.
Okay. Our next item is CUP 19-001, and design review 19-001, Van Horn Project.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, we'll go ahead with these, we'll get down, sort of flip that last one.
Okay, just the last one.
Last two, yes.
Okay, this first portion of the project, conditional use permit 19-001 and design review 19-001 is a project that you had considered back in January of this year. The original project, 1037 North Main Street, was going to take, leave the existing retail unit and add another retail unit on the ground level, the two residential apartment units on a second level. That did get approved by the Planning Commission. Subsequent to that, the applicant has submitted some revised plans, which we'll be looking at right after this, but in order so that we wouldn't have two conditional use permits on the same property, we're asking that the previous one, which had been approved, be revoked, and then move forward with the second proposal.
All right, very good. Any questions of Jim?
No questions.
No, sir.
Any questions of Jim?
Please.
I think it's cut and dried, anybody in the audience wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll close the floor, and if you're all ready to vote?
Yes.
All right. Brenda, roll call vote, or let's make a motion, please, I'm sorry, I forget the headphones, Commissioner Dowell.
I would make a motion to revoke CUP 19-001 and DR 19-001 that were approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on January 28, 2019.
Okay, do I have a second, that motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Dowell, seconds the motion. Brenda, now we'll get roll call vote.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
And Chairman Williams?
Aye, you can actually carry it. All right, now on the CUP 19-002 and design review 19-007.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Williams. As you said, this is a conditional use permit 19-002 and design review 19-007. Project location hasn't changed, it's the same as previous. This differs in the sense, basically, the one, previously it was a retail unit on the ground floor, is changing to a residential hotel-type unit. The entire project as a whole is being considered, rather than apartment-style residential units, they will be operated as a hotel-type business with three units, leaving the one existing retail unit in place. The property is in the Old Town Historic District, as such, there is not additional parking required for this, and the conditional use permit is to allow the residential hotel use in the C1 zone. The existing, the site as it exists today, this is the retail unit that would be remaining, so you see it down below, and the upper picture here shows the existing retail on ground floor. This would be a hotel unit set back, back behind that courtyard area with two separate units above. Little bit more close-up of the finished product, so once again, the residential, are these three, the existing retail remaining right there. The existing, there's a residence to the rear of the property that would be removed to make way for this overall larger project, that's the rear of the structure which would be demolished. The floor plan generally hasn't changed, there's a couple minor little changes that the overall footprint has made, but what you would have here is the retail on the ground floor with one residential unit above, and then the two separate residential units, the hotel units. Sorry, I keep saying residential units, technically I should be referring to it as hotel units, so. hotel units, so, um... The first floor plan, um, as you see, has the retail and one unit, the upper level with two separate hotel units. This is just a picture of some of the other existing hotel properties, um, in Old Town and in that general vicinity. A few pictures of, uh, the surrounding neighborhood. Street view looking north from the property. The existing courtyard area, uh, right here, would have access to one unit right here with the stairs going up to the second. It's a property directly across the street, also across the street, and the view looking south. And the property just immediately to the north, and looking East Yavapai. Break-in lot behind, and this is the alley immediately adjacent to the rear of the, of this property. So with that, that concludes what I would have to say, um, so are there any questions regarding the change and how, what you're looking at that's different tonight versus the previous approval?
Uh, any questions of Jim? Commissioner Hart, any technical questions?
Not of Jim, no.
Okay. Technical questions for you?
Uh, I just have a couple. I'm gonna, I said it the first time, I'm gonna say it again. Is, has Yavapai Street, is that gonna still remain like it is, or are we in the works yet to?
Yavapai Street will remain. Discussions I've heard so far is that ultimately it would be a one-way, unless there's a decision been made beyond me, th- there's not clear if it's gonna be one-way to Main Street or one-way from Main Street heading back into the, to the neighborhood.
Again, it's just a concern of mine, um, it's, the, the street's not legal, two, two lanes, it's maybe a lane and a half, you can't get two vehicles in there. And then with the addition of the sidewalk, which is still going in, correct?
Uh, correct.
I think that's gonna encroach on it, so I think that's something that needs to be in our minds, that, that street is gonna have to be addressed fairly quickly with it.
The adjacent property owner did do a survey of their property, and I think identified that there's 16 feet of total public right-of-way between this and the neighboring property to the north. So, yes, it's not a, ultimately not a two-way street.
Uh, and the second question is, this color schemes and the, the finishing products we saw, they look the same, it's the same as the original project? Is it looks-
It, yes, it's the same materials, the same colors. The only change was a little bit of changes, originally was, um, access to a retail unit. Um, now that it's a hotel unit, there's a little different, um, appearance on the outside with that.
Okay, thanks, sir.
And this would be the entire, the courtyard area basically sits out in that area.
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Um, sorry, Mr. Norwood?
Yeah, Norwood?
Yeah, is the, um, the courtyard area is gonna be fenced in, Jim?
Yes, it will be, will be fenced in.
That's the only question I have.
So, yeah, there will be a, maybe that's easier. Which, there is an existing wrought iron fencing there now, I'm not sure if that's gonna be the same one that they're using, or it's something else, but it would be fenced in.
Um, the, the question I have is gonna, pertains to something that you kind of pointed out and mentioned. So are, are these, are these actually going to be technical hotel spaces in that, will they be tracked as such? And I, I know that in the city, um, hotels usually have like a, a tax that they pay back, you know, like a bed tax and things like that, and with the, with the large number of vacation rentals that are going on in private homes, I don't think those usually have the same, uh, tax base. So are these gonna be considered private residences that are hotelled out through a service, or are they actually gonna be treated as hotels?
Would actually be treated as a hotel.
Okay, alright, just trying to verify that.
Yes.
Jim, I don't have any questions. Uh, the applicant?
Yes, the applicant is here.
Alright, can we turn the lights back on, please? Thank you.
And Christopher Nuski there, architect.
Alright.
He's here as well.
Okay.
Christopher Nuski, I'm their, um, agent, the architect for this project.
Right.
And sorry to bring it back, but my clients, um, did some research and looking at the cost of this and decided that the best way to really get a return on their money was to go to this route rather than the previous route, so-
Go to short-term rentals as opposed to-
And, um, that, the question about the street, you know, that, that, Yavapai Street is a substandard street, and, um, we're still talking with the city engineers about that situation, because if we put a sidewalk on our side of the street for the city and take five more feet of that, and then the people to the north of us do the same thing, there'll be about a six-foot wide street there. So, um, I don't know, that, I think maybe the engineering department has to be a little creative in looking at that, that street, because it is non-conforming and, and dealing with it in a different way than they do with the normal streets. So we're in discussions with them about that now.
Okay.
And that, that's not uncommon. I had some issues with, uh, the street directly to the north of here, when people park on one side of it, there's no way there's dri-, there's access for two ways, so, uh, I think it's gonna be an issue that needs to be resolved, Old Town-wide at some point.
Now, we are providing parking in the rear.
Yeah, you have two spots back there. Um, timeframe, um, we normally will-
Well, we'd like to get this permanent within the next two months.
Okay. And total compliance with everything, getting a bill?
Oh, yes.
12 months?
Mm-hmm. Well, the construction's gonna be a, might be a little bit longer than that.
Okay.
We still have to go through the bidding process to get the final numbers and-
Right. 12 months, well, we put a 12-month frame, that should cover most of it.
Right.
Okay. Otherwise, you're pretty much ready to go.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and have you looked at the other stipulations?
Yes.
They're okay, you don't have any problems with those? I don't have any further questions. I, you're basically taking the same project and just-
Right.
Refining it.
Exactly. You just decided that, because of the investment, you know, they needed to get a return on it, it was, um, better. I think it'd be a, a definite bonus to Old Town, because you can have people staying down there and using all the facilities at the same time.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you, man.
Thank you. Uh, I don't have any slips for any comments in the public on this. Uh, okay, I'll close the floor, uh, to the public, and Commissioner Hart, you wanna give us your comments and-
Well, actually, I had a question, I was, could I ask the architect to come back?
Well, yes. Can you come back up to the microphone? I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, that's-
Um, is, that front courtyard, is that dedicated for the use of the people who have the ground floor unit?
No, it's dedicated to all three.
Okay, it's all three.
The, the two upstairs, you're gonna have a balcony, and then there's a small walled off area courtyard for the lower level, and so all three, um, units will be able to use that courtyard in the, in the bottom.
Okay, and is the ground floor unit being set up to be AD accessible, or?
We would like that, um, we're, we're working with our engineers, um, on the flood level. You guys just did a new study, so we have to redo our, um, floor elevation, and, um, we haven't made, we haven't had, got all the data together to make that decision, but yeah, we, we'd like to make that.
That's the direction you're pursuing?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Time to go, Mr. Sir.
Do you have any quick, I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't want to cut you off there.
Yeah, I, I was just wondering, Mr. Dow brought up some, uh, second time about that side street, Yavapai Street. I was wondering, does that really have to be a street? Could that be used, could there be another use for that? Maybe, uh, public use or a common area, uh, which they don't really have in, in Old Town? I was just wondering if anybody's given that idea any thought?
I don't know. Uh, that's probably someone would, you know, city, city manager group can give consideration to, uh, down the road here, uh, uh, it's, you know, the real necessity of having that street, I know Commissioner Dow says it, it's, it's a problem street as it is, and it does provide access back into, um, those properties back in behind there, so I'm not sure that would-
Well, historically, you'd take your life in your hands driving down, and that junkyard was there.
Yeah, I remember that, just one of the junkyard, yes, yes. It definitely approves it.
Yes, it improved, right.
Yes, it definitely is approved, yes, okay. Thank you, sir. Now let's sit down. Alright, now we'll close it to, okay, Commissioner Hart?
Do you need to open it back up to the public?
Yeah, you wanna open it up?
No, you need to open it back up to the public?
No, I, I asked her, I was like, yeah, yeah, okay, we still, anybody wants to comment on it? We're okay? Alright, now we'll close it to the public. Commissioner Hart, you wanna?
Um, I think that, you know, it's a nice, uh, repair of the corner, it's kind of unsung yet, I think right now, I think, um, I'd like to see, when they're developing the plan, something better in terms of the enclosure for the courtyard than what's there right now. Um, but, um, from the sounds of what Mr. Christopher was talking about, uh, I think it's kinda, I think they're pursuing the right direction.
Okay. Commissioner Dow?
Um, I'll respectfully disagree with you on the courtyard. I kinda like the open courtyard, 'cause it opens up to-
Well, no, I, I open-
Old Town, I kinda like that open concept.
But just clean.
Um, I think the only issue is getting that a dr-, that street addressed, and again, I look forward to Old Town being the hip place to go.
Commissioner Norwood?
I think it's a, gonna be a terrific, um, improvement to the area, a nice anchor for that section of the, of the town.
Mr. Dowling?
Uh, I would just second the concern about that roadway. Um, I don't know, that's something we could place, a burden we place on the, this specifically, but I do wanna make sure that it's clear and known that it's a concern.
We have some city officials here tonight, maybe they're listening. Uh, I agree, I, I guess can be, we, as before, when we approved this before as an apartment project, you know, it was, it was a great addition, get some residential, whether it's short-term or long-term downtown, uh, that, we need more of that, and that's great, and, uh, this is very well-designed, and it'd be a definite improvement of what's there. Uh, so, Commissioner Dowling, will you please give us a motion?
I will go ahead and, uh, make a motion to approve project number CUP 19-002 and DR 19-007, Lofts of Old Town, with the following stipulations: that the project is developed in conformance with the development plans as approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the June 17th, 2019 meeting; that the project conforms to the code review board comments dated May 16th, 2019; any other required supporting documentation is submitted to staff and approved, i.e. drainage reports, surveys, et cetera; the property owner develops the alley and any roadway improvements along Yavapai Drive in accordance with city standards as approved by the city engineer; a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of conditions shall be issued by the timeframe specified, with this case was 12 months, I believe; the City of Cottonwood deserves the right to revoke the conditional use permit if the use creates an irredeemable public safety problem as determined by the city.
Okay, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes. In this, um, condition number five, instead of completion, can we change that to first permit, pulling the first permit?
Okay. Um, document compliance, documenting the issuance of building permits instead of-
Yes, pulling the first permit.
Completion of conditions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I would revise item number five on the stipulations to a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the, uh, the pulling of permits within a 12-month time period.
Okay. And we had a second?
Yeah, a second.
That's okay, a second, and as amended motion. Uh, Brenda, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dow?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
And Chairman Williams.
Aye, and Ashley Carried. Good luck, and, uh, I look forward to seeing that project come out of the ground. Alright, now, I'll switch up here just real quick, and do CUP 19004 fully garage.
Thank you Chairman Williams. This is a conditional use permit, um, for a detached garage. Current code allows a detached garage to be 16 feet in height to the, um, to the highest point of the roof. With a conditional use permit granted by the planning commission, that can exceed the 16-foot height, and that's looked at on a case-by-case basis. And this is in the Quail Canyon subdivision. The address is actually 2860 South Quail Canyon Road. There's a two that got dropped off there, so 2860 Quail Canyon Road. And as I stated, uh, code allows 16-foot height unless planning commission grants something higher, which is the request before you tonight. The site does presently have a single-family residence, um, already constructed on the This is the, um, house, the detached garage, or detached accessory garage would be in this rough location right there. There's a little bit of a slope down on that, be in this vicinity. This is looking at, uh, these, all these shots are looking at from the street, sort of from the lowest location on the property, and a street view looking to the north, and back to the west, and off to the northeast, and the property across the street. There is a site plan, uh, that you have, um, in your packet there that shows, a little better location of where that, um, detached garage would be located to the rear of the, of the residence. This afternoon, uh, we did have one, um, phone call, somebody didn't leave a, a name or information, but there was one objection just this afternoon, uh, but we have nothing in writing, um, regarding that, but did just wanna bring that, um, point out to you. With that, that concludes what I have to say. Um, the applicant's contractor is here this evening, Aaron Schwader, so if you have any questions for him as well-
Very good.
-as staff.
Uh, how big are these sites?
Pardon?
How large are this home site?
I believe there's a, some of the sites in that subdivision are one acre, some of them are two.
This one looks like it's 1.6 feet.
Yeah.
So around one, two acres, they are a large lot.
Yeah.
Subdivision.
Okay, very good. Any questions of Jim? Not a few.
Are we allowed to ask what the complaint is if the person's not here?
It was just a complaint came in that somebody objected to it.
But there wa, there wasn't a-
I didn't hear that, I didn't have a firsthand conversation with that, it was just passed from admin that-
I, I don't wanna cross the line, but if we knew that the complaint was in regards to you, it would be nice if we could know, but-
Okay. Mr. Chair, it's, it's not crossing the line to, to ask, and it's also not crossing the line to not give it much weight if the person didn't identify themselves.
Right. Commissioner Norwood?
I'm not quite sure who I should ask this question to, Mr. Chairman.
Well, maybe to the developer or the builders here.
Yep.
If it's a construction item, probably to the builder.
It is, yeah.
Okay, let's wait till they get-
Okay.
Commissioner Dowling, any questions of Jim? Technical question?
Uh, nothing at this point.
Okay. Jim, uh, the applicant here, or their contractor?
Yes.
Mister, would you please identify yourself for the record?
Aaron Schwader, contractor.
Okay. Um, the, um, anything you would like to add to this, what we're-
Um, no, I don't, I don't feel it's gonna be a, a hindrance to anyone's view, um, the reason why the, the heights, you know, so they can get their RV inside, um, I don't, I don't see, it, the neighbors are at a good distance, so I don't see really encroaching-
Any restrictions on the subdivision, uh, CCRs?
No, they, they, they approved it.
I was gonna come back up and say that HOA did approve, um, this application within their-
Okay. That'd be very important, okay. Very good. Commissioner Hart, any questions of the contractor? Okay, that'd be very important, okay. Very good. Commissioner Hardwood, any questions of the contractor?
Did anybody consider trying to make this addition appear to be part of the same construction? I think it would be helpful to see that same wainscote that's on the house continue onto this garage, especially since it appears to be on the street front. So to make the whole unit look like a whole, you know, like it was one structure. Yeah. And so I'm just looking at that and going, you know, that would help, I think, in terms of the overall view of the project. Has that been considered?
No one's brought it up, but I don't think it would be a problem.
A larger scale from what you're looking at there.
Well, again, it's... Well, it's the same thing. I mean, typically, when doing additions, you want to try and make the addition look like it was part of the original design, and that's what I'm not seeing here. I'm seeing something that looks like a block that's just been added onto it. So...
I'm sure I could discuss it with the homeowner. She probably wouldn't have a problem adding that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I see that this...
Sorry, do it down.
Yes. I see this is over at 900 square feet, right? So, does it have to be sprinkled?
Yes.
Okay. So, my follow-up question is, is it on well or is it on city water?
It's a well.
It's a well, and with that, we obviously have a reserve well capacity in order to keep that up in case there's an ultimate failure of the well.
I believe she does.
Yeah. Is it part of the project? Or is it a separate project from...
That would be a separate project.
Okay, so you're not addressing that when you addressed the house?
Yeah.
Is the owner here?
Yeah.
I believe the home's... Does it have its own separate well on-site? Because I know there's one large well that was done for the entire subdivision that the city then purchased. So... Yes, correct, okay. So it doesn't have an on-site well for that property?
Community well?
Okay, all right. I was just trying to clarify, because you said, "Does it have its own well," or...
Yeah, what I meant by, "Does it have its own well," is, "Is it on the property?" Because that brings up a concern for me, if it's going to be sprinkled, and does the well capacity have it? If it goes down, do we have enough water in the order to generate sprinklers?
I believe it should be on city water.
Yeah, I think it's on city water. Yes, sir.
My question is, how accurate is the view here relative to the roofline of the garage and the roofline of the house?
Well, I think the view there is actually showing a little higher than it would actually be, because there's a slope.
That's my question.
Yeah, it would be around three and a half feet, and it's showing around a little over four feet, just the way it's drawn. So it'd actually be a little bit lower, closer to the house level.
By six inches or by more?
Roughly six inches.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dowling, you?
Yeah, generally, I don't have a real problem with it. I just, a little bit of me sees a slippery slope, because one neighbor goes and asks for four feet, and then another neighbor comes back and wants five, and then another neighbor wants, you know, I kind of see some of that. Was there any consideration given to adjusting the finished floor on that, maybe down a couple of feet? Because if they have one point, over one and a half acres, it wouldn't be that much to spread that out if they were... If they were to lower the finished floor of that garage to get it closer to matching, was there a specific reason that they didn't want to do that? Was it just for the cost of excavation?
No, it was, we talked about that in the grade of the driveway, and then heading down again and trying to get an RV in there and maneuver it was an issue.
All right, I was just trying to make sure if there's a technical reason or purely aesthetic. But yeah, I mean, if the HOA's approved it, you know, I think we're okay with... That governing body has asserted itself on its own, and we're still responsible for doing our part of it. So that is my one concern, is kind of that slippery slope of the next neighbor wants another one, the next, you know, and then we get into this race to 35 feet or something. But I know it's on a case-by-case basis. I just want to make that concern known and stated.
I don't have any questions. Thank you. Okay. Do I have anybody from the public? Nobody else wants to speak on this? All right, I will close the floor. Commissioner Hardwood, comments? Do you...
Other than the lack of coordination between the addition and the existing structure, I don't have any objections.
You want to make a stipulation of that?
I'd like to see some effort at, you know, continuing the wainscote treatment from the house onto the addition. That'd help bring down, and also the height of it will also help cut down the visual aspect of the height.
Any else, sir?
That'll be it, thank you.
Commissioner Dow?
I share the same concerns as Mr. Dowling, that, you know, how much... You know, is the next one going to be 35? And quite honestly, if the property was at 1.65 acres, I would have my... I'd have some real concerns. But because of the size of the property, I'm okay with it.
Right. Commissioner Norwood?
I have no questions.
Any comments, sir?
I made all mine.
Okay. Yeah, I agree, and the site that garage is on, the view site really is coming out to the north, northeast, I think, is...
Yes.
So it's behind the house in a way, some blockage of the Black Hills view, but...
It's further from the streets.
Right.
It appears to even see one.
Right, right, yeah. And do you have any... Have you any problem with that stipulation about the wainscoting continuation? Okay, I think that's a good idea, and we'll make that an additional stipulation there. All right. Mr. Dowling, I will ask you again to make a motion, if you would, sir.
I'll try it again. I would like to make a motion that we approve project number PCU 19-004 Foley Garage with the following stipulations: That the project conformed to code review board comments dated May 22, 2019; That the project is developed in conformance with the development plans as approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at the June 17, 2019; The certificate of zoning compliance and documentation documenting the completion of contingents... Conditions shall be issued prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy; And the City of Cottonwood deserves the right to revoke the conditional use permit if the use creates an irredeemable public safety problem as determined by the city; And a following added stipulation of attempting to integrate the wainscoting from the existing... Continuation of the wainscoting from the existing home.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Dow, second Mr. Dowling's motion. Brenda, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dow?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
And Chairman Williams.
Aye, absolutely carried, okay. Good luck. All right, thank you very much. All right, the last item of new business is CUP 19-003, Bertie Valley Homeless Coalition. A conditional use permit to operate a daytime drop-in center for the homeless. James, the floor is yours, sir.
Do I hear a motion for adjournment? As you stated, this is a conditional use permit, 19-003, for the Bertie Valley Homeless Coalition. Currently, they operate at 14 South Main Street. They were before commission, a little over a year ago, getting their permit for the drop-in center and the cold-weather shelter at the 14 South Main Street location. What you're looking at this evening is going to basically be, will be, moving those existing facility... Or operation to another location. That's the request this evening. Location is on 15th Street. Give a little idea, DES, Department of Economic Security, is located just adjacent, next door. Pepe's Cafe is on the highway, Main Street at that location. Zoning is C1, which is like commercial. And the conditional use permit would be required to operate these services at that location. Current code does allow for headquarters of nonprofits and other philanthropic organizations. The applicant has provided a business plan. This is the same business plan, protocols, procedures where they've been operating within the last year. This is a street view of the building that is not... The sign is not there now. That's been superimposed on there, just to give a reference. Signage is done by a separate permit, so signage is not what you're looking at this evening. 15th Street is located in front. The portion of the building that they will be using will only be approximately the front half of the existing building. Currently, as you can see, the parking area landscaping out in front is marginal. They will be required as part of the code requirement to hard surface, and because of the quantity of spaces that they're required, chip seal is a permitted hard surface, and they will be providing 10 parking spaces along in this area. Because of the nature of the existing, what they have to work with, they have proposed there to be some above-ground planters and pots to meet the landscaping requirement for the code. Another little picture of the front of the building, the side of the building. This is on the side adjacent to Department of Economic Security. It's looking at the rear of the building and side of the building. This would be the north side. You can see the roofline behind up there of the... Looking to the rear of the properties, those properties front on Main Street, and this is the rear. There is an alley that, right, that goes between those. There's an adjacent vacant parcel that is fenced. This is the property immediately across the street, to the west on 15th Street.
Excuse me, Jim, what's in that?
This is a single-family residence and a detached garage and, you know, in here with a carport structure. So it is a residential, C1 zoning. Currently, it's operated as a residential use. Here you can see that same property, a little different view. This is the property to the north, sort of looking from the building in question across the vacant lot to a residence on the north side. It's looking from the alley area to the businesses on Main Street. This is looking north on the alley from behind the property. This is standing on 15th Street. The building in question is to the left. This would be the location of the dumpsters, which currently exist, and is provided dumpsters for the DES facility as well. And looking north on 15th Street. This is a picture that the applicant has submitted for fencing. There's been some discussion if fencing was going to be part of the stipulation that would be required, the slats in the existing chain link fence, is something they would discuss with you. Some ideas they gave regarding raised planters and in pots. And this site shows where they would be putting in the... Their 10 parking spaces. Currently, the parking does back out onto the street. It would remain backing out onto the street. It's a dead-end location, and based on such, could be allowed to retain its parking to back out on the street. That's all that I have to say this evening, if there's any questions, and I think there might be a couple people here that will be talking as well.
The application says to operate a daytime drop-in center. I believe the existing facility also provides nighttime shelter.
Or the cold-weather shelter.
Cold weather.
When it's forecast to go below 35, then that opens up as a...
So is this an accurate statement in this, and you're covering out there? I guess the definition of daytime. I guess it could be at night, too.
That's true, then that would be. It's the existing operations that they're operating at their current facility.
To operate a center for homeless individuals, okay, is probably a more accurate description.
I'll pick that.
Part of the year, they'll be, most of the time, a daytime center, but during the winter months, it could be used for overnight stays, like they are in the existing one there.
They could just omit daytime, maybe, then?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, eliminate the operate the daytime drop-in center. Okay, good. Commissioner Hardwood, you have any technical... Jim?
What is the intended circulation, pedestrian circulation access intended to be? Is it that stair coming from the back of the economic security? Or is it, they're planning on coming around the road to this site?
It would be from 15th Street, let me get back to the... So the main entrance off the front of the building, and this is the parking that is off of 15th Street. So there is no access, there's pedestrian access.
Like for people, like for homeless people coming from Main Street, how do they get here?
They would have to go either up to Bert Hooch and down to 15th. Or there is pedestrian access that comes from the DES. There are steps.
Well, there's some steps over there on the right.
Right next to that dumpster location.
Okay. So those are both the access routes?
Right.
So the people are going to be coming through the neighborhood to get to this facility?
Right.
Yes.
Commissioner Dow, Jim? Commissioner Hardwood, any more technical questions?
Well, I guess the only other technical question is, when I look at the plan, I don't see much of a plan, even with the one with the parking layout. I mean, there's more to this than just, okay, this parking stop. You're talking about landscaping. Where's the landscaping going to go?
What we're looking at because of the existing building is the conditional use permit and the use that would be permitted at that location. It is not a design review application
Ah, okay.
in the sense where we would look at some of those other aesthetic details.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just to address the DES thing, I have talked to some individuals with DES, and they are putting a plan together to put a fence around the back portion of DES. So I'm not sure how long access will be down that sidewalk from the back of DES. Otherwise, I don't have any questions for you at this point.
There would probably have to remain some type of access, because that dumpster location was coordinated in that location to accommodate them.
They have, yeah, they have security concerns right now, so I think they'll work it out, but...
Okay. Okay.
Just going with the technical questions again.
Yeah. In a design review section, then we would expect to see improvements to the building, cosmetic improvements around the property.
For design review proposals, those are generally, yes, the types of things we would look at. And they've offered, you know, some of the screening and landscaping.
And painting of the building and all those things would be under consideration by...
Again, there's...
Were it a design review.
We're not doing...
I'm asking the question.
Yes, sir. I'm just trying to clarify, we're not, we're doing conditional use permit only, okay?
Well, if it were designed review, then...
Right.
If they do improvements to the exterior at this moment, other than putting some plants there, as I understand it, Jim, there's no other exterior improvements that they were planning on, would kick us into the design review. It's strictly a use permit. Is this use a proper use of this property?
That's correct. Probably the biggest site improvement would be the hard surface, the pavement area.
Yeah, and that's under the zoning code for C1.
Right.
To have, okay. Mr. Dahl, anything for Jim?
No.
Okay. Just to clarify, for, as I understand it, there's no, there was no plans to repaint the building or anything? It's just, it's going to remain basically the same as it is?
That's...
Okay.
That's correct.
The other question I have, okay, across the street, you have their residence?
Yes.
And then to the north of that, what is the other, is that some apartments?
It is a, this is a...
No, that's a house there. I'm talking across the street.
Oh, yes, that goes...
That's to the north of this?
Yeah, to the north, there are apartments.
And there's a contractor building on the end, Latch Electric, I think I saw some. All right, I don't have any other questions. Who's here to speak for the applicant, please? Please tell us your name.
Hi, I'm Marina Avalon, the executive director of the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. Hi, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This building at 327 South Fifteenth Street is a perfect location for our new home. We currently have seven hundred, well, a little less than seven hundred square feet. This new building will offer us sixteen hundred square feet. And we are so cramped right now, like, in terms of room for clothing, toiletries, food. We, we're in very small quarters right now. And it will increase our emergency overnight shelter from the current amount of twelve. We're currently allowed twelve occupants of the emergency overnight, whereas in the new building will be allowed twenty. And we were open forty nights this past winter, and for over sixty hours during the February snowstorm, we were the only facility or agency in the whole area that was open. So we just remained open for people to come to. So we've had to turn people away last winter from the emergency shelter. So our goal is just to keep them from freezing. You know, that's why we have a thirty-five degree or under, as a humane, compassionate purpose. It's important for us to be good neighbors. We haven't had one complaint from the neighborhood that we're in. Our clientele or our guests are not allowed to congregate or loiter out front. And they have to be in the facility, or, and we do have a smoking patio out back. And so there's not, we haven't had any complaints from the, from those around us or in the neighborhood. Our guests highly respect, and they appreciate the use of the drop-in center. And they respect the rules, like, they don't loiter in the area after hours, and they don't, you know, congregate in there. And we will make sure that any of the new neighbors will have my phone number and my email in case any issues arise. They could reach me immediately. We will have a smoking patio. Do you have that north side, the... This has a side door where we're thinking of having them exit and having a smoking area over to the side. And so that they're not exiting in and out of the front door. I mean, we're very conscientious of that, where we are now, and, and the parking. So that it would be out that side door. And there would be patio chairs, probably. We have considered the slats in the fence in the front portion. But there's a question about whether that would impede the police from surveillance and being able to see if anybody's camping in there at night, because they, they make rounds after hours, because that's part of our rules, is that there's no hanging out in the area. So they showed you the raised planters and chip seal parking spaces, and we're hoping that the building will be upgraded. And I'm working on getting paint donated and getting someone. So I, we are looking at that as a more pleasing...
What's going to be used for the remainder of the building? What's going to happen? What's...
I believe it's being used for storage.
By Rose Appliance or...
No.
The owner?
The owner.
And that, those refrigerators and things are out there on there, it will be moved off?
Yes.
As far as you understand?
That Rose Appliance has...
Yeah.
Yeah. Rose Appliance bought their, their own building.
Yeah.
I think it's on Western.
Yeah, okay. So basically, it'd be a storage, as far as you understand.
Right.
Okay. And in the yard, you'd be the only people using that yard area?
Yeah, the lot. And it would just be, it wouldn't be for parking. It would just be for the smoking area.
What would your plan be there? What are you thinking about for the patio surface? What do you, would it be out there in the dirt, or is it...
Well, we hadn't, right now, it's kind of a grassy gravel.
Yeah.
And we hadn't thought about doing anything to that, but putting out...
Some chairs.
Some chairs for them, so that they can smoke, but out of the view of the public.
Right, yes, okay. Sounds good. Mr. Hart, any questions of the applicant to clarify?
Well, you asked the ones that I was curious about. What's going on in the rest of the building? Is somebody going to be clearing out all the debris that at least is still in the pictures?
That's in the back of the building?
Yeah, yeah.
That, is that, I believe, is Rose Appliance's?
Is that somebody else's occupation?
Yeah, that will be taken care of.
Okay. All right.
There you go.
Yes, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Dahl, maybe you can comment on the sliding fence, from a police perspective, too.
Yeah, I'm going to comment on a couple things. I understand that you probably haven't received any complaints. And through my line of work, I know that a lot of people don't like to be the complainer. They like to be anonymous. During my duties, I walk around currently in your alley and in your area. And I have heard concerns from people who live across the alley. And the concerns typically are the loitering. I know that there is currently a thing in place to where we keep the loitering to a minimum. But I know some of the people that you've brought here with you to the meeting tonight, I have personally had to tell multiple times to not loiter. You serve a place in this community that nobody else can fill, and it is a necessary position in this community. I think that it is a great operation in that, but you have the one concern about the loitering beyond the property.
Yeah.
I have spoken to a resident there who has the same concerns. So I would, that's my one sticking point, is the loitering beyond your property and how we address that. Because if you're not getting complaints, then we have to find out why we're not, we have to figure out why we're not getting, why you're not getting those complaints, because they are happening. So I guess we have to find a way to bridge that, even if it's an anonymous way to bridge it, so that the people who surround the area and live there feel more comfortable reporting to you. Because at this point, they obviously don't feel it, because they don't want to, they don't want to put a kibosh to a very great thing, which I completely get. And I think that's part of their concern. They don't want to report it, because they're serving something in the community. So that's my biggest concern, is the loitering on beyond that, and speaking to some of the residents with that. And that was part of why DES is talking about putting the fence on their backside, too, with security purposes. So just a concern that I have personally seen.
Yeah, we, the planning and zoning has the high complaints, have you? Yeah, and, and everyone within three hundred feet has my phone number and my email.
I think you have some great rules, and I think, I think honestly, that they're almost always implied. There's the one, number five, which is the one that says, "Loitering, panhandle, camp lane, alcohol."
Well, the alley, you're talking about the alley. The alley is a public right-of-way. I have no, the police, I have called the police about the alley, and they have told me I have no business complaining about the alley, because I needn't do that.
Well, I...
But it's a public right-of-way.
I will respectfully disagree with that, with the term of, "It's a right-of-way, it's a thoroughfare." So if somebody is not using it as a thoroughfare, then you may ask that the people move on. So...
I, yeah, the police have told me I can't do that.
You absolutely can. You absolutely can. If somebody's loitering in a thoroughfare area, it's no different than a street. The alleyway is a street. If they're loitering in the alleyway, it's a thoroughfare. You may call us, and we will take action on it.
Call who?
The police.
I've called the police numerous times.
I have some connections with the police, so I'll see what I can do.
Yeah, because I've, I've talked to Chief Gazelle, I've talked to both commanders.
I know personally that we make it a priority. The police department makes it a priority. So I would just, number five is a concern for me, and I think it's a concern for other people in the area. That's why I bring it up. The slant fencing, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea, and easy ways to maybe overcome the police not being able to see in there, would be put a combination lock on the gate that we can get in and out of, or, you know, something that we can go in and see, if that's something you want. But I think the slanted fencing is a very good idea, and I think the police wouldn't have an issue with it, as long as we had a way to check it out once in a while.
Yeah, I've asked them, and I haven't gotten a response before this meeting, but I've asked them if that would be a problem for them.
I don't, I don't see it being a overall, if we, if it was a locked-up thing that we, that the police couldn't get into, I think they might have an issue with it. But if they had access to it, I don't think it would be a concern. So just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dahl?
Is the facility going to operate? Would you clarify from my mind, is the facility going to operate 24/7?
No.
Or, no? Okay.
Never.
Well, then, my question is, sort of extends a little bit with what Mr. Dahl has, has talked about. If the facility isn't under some kind of surveillance when it's closed, and there's a significant number of homeless people who are aware of the facility, what's to prevent them from kind of congregating around the facility, knowing it's there, knowing that they were welcome there, and in hours when it's closed?
That's something, that's a concern of ours.
Something that I think would need to be addressed.
We have surveillance cameras, both within the drop-in center and in the exterior. So we have recorded, you know, it records on the...
And then what's the, what's the consequences of finding someone or a group of people gathering there when it's technically closed?
Well, we haven't had anyone. They've, they've all vacated the property at five o'clock, the property that we're on. Now, maybe the alley, I can't speak for the alley, but the property that we're occupying has been vacated. And I do have an agreement with the police department that they will patrol the area, especially in the wintertime, to make sure people aren't sleeping there. And, but I, I've filled out all their forms, I don't know, it's called shoppers.
Safe shopper forms.
Safe shopper forms. And I've, I've made arrangements with them, and I've been down there and talked to them specifically, because we, there were two instances that I know of, that where there was somebody sleeping on the porch. And I asked, and that's what instigated me, talking to the police about them patrolling and shining lights on the porch and...
So, but that leads to another question. If a person was sleeping on the porch and the facility was closed, where does that person head to?
I don't know. I'm not, I don't discuss with people where they go or where they camp. I don't get involved in that.
There's no alternative at this point?
Well, there's Angie's house. If the police find them, they, because of the, I'm sure you're familiar with the Ninth Circuit Court ruling, that the homeless cannot be criminalized for camping if there is not a facility that they can go into. So if the police found them, they would try to get them into Angie's house.
They do have 24/7?
Yeah.
Angie's house, okay. At least it's limited, but there is a facility.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dahl.
Um, yeah, I just, I know that it's a valuable service that's being provided, and it's very much needed. You know, just do the best you can.
Yeah.
Have you, what have you done to discuss this at this point with the neighbors? And so forth? Have you had any one-on-one meetings with them, or talking to them?
No, Rose, I've had meetings with Rose, who lives across the street in that house.
All right.
Across the street, and we have met together a number of times.
Okay.
And talked about this and about her concerns.
All right.
And my idea about the slides was more from talking, came more from talking to her than, than my personal.
Yeah, well, it seems like, give, give, they're out in the patios too, so, give them a little privacy too.
Right.
You know, I mean, from the, for the-
Right.
Your clients as well.
Exactly. And I believe I could get a fencing company to donate that.
I know you discussed when we, you talked about your location, that it was on the main street. It's easy to find. How are they gonna find this location?
Well, word of mouth. There's kind of an underground uh, communication system where one person tells another, person tells another person. We'll have flyers at the Old Town Mission, you know, like Catholic Charities, that, in the front door, in Catholic Charities.
Now, at Ark, you didn't have much success, at least for the-
No, that was very far out.
Okay, just too far out.
And it was very, it was too far for people to travel to, and it was inconsistent. So now, we have a location that people know to come to. And that they have to be in before six o'clock and out by, well, it was seven, but we've been letting people stay till eight, till the sun at least comes up. And, 'cause sometimes it's still twenty-five degrees at seven in the morning. You know, in the wintertime.
It's very true. Okay, yeah, and with DES there?
And DES is a valuable resource for us, because their, many of their clientele are our clientele. And many, many of our visitors need their services. So access to that is like golden to us.
Now, you're leasing this building?
Yes.
And is this a, Pauline Lees, who are you talking about here? Is it just gonna be an annual lease, or is it long-term?
Well, probably annual lease to begin with.
Do you have plans beyond going here? You, I know one time you talked about a property up that area to buy, you're open?
Yeah, well, I'm still working on purchasing a property for transitional housing.
Okay.
Because one thing that I really find, like, the property I'm looking for is in that direct area. So the issue is that many of the homeless get, find employment, and trying to maintain a job and living a homeless lifestyle is very, very difficult. So at least this would give them a place to sleep, and a place to shower, a place to eat, to do the laundry.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? All right, I have to, yes, Mr. Dahl.
I'm, I'm hearing some conflicting statements. I thought I read somewhere that there wasn't gonna be any laundry facilities in there.
No.
And then you just said that the-
And the transitional housing. That's way down, that's in the future.
Okay, and then?
And this, um, location is much closer to Safeway, where we give laundry vouchers to the laundromat in the Safeway Plaza, so people can get their vouchers and they'll be very close to there. So that's another plus.
The other conflict is, is there are gonna be hours, and yet the opening sentence is, is requesting that twenty-four-seven, twenty-four hours a day, seven-day-a-week conditional use permit.
Yes, that's in case we decide to make it ten AM to five PM. We will only ever have the emergency overnight shelter when it's there, unless it's thirty-five degrees or less.
Okay.
So it will never be, but twenty-four-seven is to allow us to, like, the last time I came before you was to ask for twenty-four-seven, and we did extend our hours to the weekend. So, um, th- this is in case we decide to open like at ten or eleven to change it from one to five. But not, not overnight.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dahl, you have one more.
Yes, so ma'am, in our packets, we have a piece of paper that says, "Day Drop-In Center of Verde Valley Homeless Coalition Visitor Contract."
Yeah.
Does everybody who comes into your facility sign this contract?
Yes.
Okay. So, reading number five, and I'll just skip to the last part of it. It says, "All visitors shall not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood in any way, e.g. loitering, panhandle camping, alcohol or drug use, or disruptive or criminal behavior." So with that, if the police were to come across somebody who was doing that, and they believed that they were using your services, could they go to you and report it to you, and you would revoke their visitor privileges?
Oh, they could, definitely.
Okay, so if, if they violate, if they violate your contract?
They could be banned.
You would have no issue?
No, I've, I ban people.
And the same thing with- And, and the same thing with the community member? So if a community member came up and said, "Hey, I have this person doing this,"
Yeah.
Would you take that in consideration also?
Oh, sure.
As a violation of your contract?
Oh, definitely. 'Cause I, I really do hold to that, you, you-
Uh, you, listen, you provide a service that is, you provide a service that is absolutely needed. My concern is that some people don't always follow, don't always follow the rules, and they make it bad for other people that they were trying to right themselves.
Yeah.
That's my concern.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we have a number of people who would like to address the commission. I'll call your names. Hopefully, I can read your writing and pronounce your names halfway decently. I would like to limit your comments to three minutes, so we can get through this meeting. Without being here half tonight, we do have a number, four and some in opposition, so we'd like to hear from everybody. And I would also ask that when you come up, if the, if your thoughts have already been expressed by a prior person, not to come up and repeat, so we can get through this. So if somebody's made a comment, and I will indicate whether you're supporting or not supporting, and that's really what you wanna do, we'll go on to the next person, okay? So we're trying to expedite this position, this proposition. So Aaron Schmarson, I'm sorry, I probably really butchered that last name. S C H U R A N, Schmarson?
Shorten?
Yes, Eric, yes.
Was that Eric Schwarter, was he the contractor on the previous?
Other project.
Okay.
The Polygraph.
Okay, I see, I, I'm with you, all right. Good, 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 good. All right, Angelo Jacob, supporting Angelo. You have three minutes, sir.
I get to.
Ready to, all right.
Yeah, um, I would like to address the, the matter of the loitering. You know, Circle K is the main purpose of that right there, all of the drunkenness and loitering. It really has nothing to do with the drop-in center, as far as anything that needs to be done aesthetically to the new location. I myself, and I know a few other people, would be more than happy to help implement any of that. And as far as loitering goes, me and myself being part of the homeless population, I'm not gonna let that happen.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Amber Silke, in support. Yes, Amber.
The drop-in center is a good supportive system. I use, I donate my time, and I've used it as a homeless person as well. Also, they do great things, they have computers, go in there and do applications, find jobs. So it's a good support.
Thank you very much. Daniel Leon, in support.
First, I would like to apologize on the behalf of the loitering inside the alley. I have been one of those people, but I am here to support and to give you my word that I will try to lead by example with the others with the trash in the alley and the neighbors. And the drop-in center has been a great resource for myself.
Thank you, sir. Rock Soloda? Is Rock here?
Yes.
There he is. And he sends support to the-
Soloda.
Yes, Soloda? All right, I can see, now, okay.
Thank you so much for letting me talk.
There you go.
Um, I provide supports for the homeless people in the community, providing supports for different things and successes in their life. Social Security cards, state IDs, nutritional supports, clothing supports, hygiene supports, so various things, so they can call on me. I think they all respect me, basically, and know what I expect of them. And I will continue doing that with several churches in the agency, Manzanita Outreach, Christian Church, Pastor Boss's Church, New Hope Church, Journey Church, and Rising Hope Church, and Spectrum Healthcare.
Very fine.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Wes Flynn?
My name is Porter Wesley Flynn, I'm a son of a WWII veteran. And I was taught to be kind and gentle to people and supportive. And the only thing I've found in this community to support people that are in need is the homeless center. And as Angelo said, we don't allow people to jeopardize that. The staff, the volunteer staff of the drop-in center has been more than helpful to many people, and I've seen them come and go and go up, not down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. Susan Cabrera, supporting.
Hi, I'm Susan Cabrera, I vol, I volunteer there. And I've only been there a month, but I've seen a lot of great things happen. And Raina, she runs a tight ship. And when she, when she catches somebody doing something, she lets them know right away, and they listen. And it's, it's been a very rewarding experience for me, just volunteering. So, and that's it.
Thank you. Okay, I have several in opposition. Bob Sheville, is that her?
Bob Sheville.
Sheville?
Sheville Lee.
Sheville Lee, yes.
Almost like the Y.
Almost like the Y.
Pretty close.
All right.
I've been, I'm, I'm a resident there. I've lived there, oh, probably four years, and ten years next door to where I'm at right now. The alley is the homeless highway. I watch homeless walk down it and back and forth every day, continual. And I've had a dog that has been killed from people throwing food over the fence that's poisonous. I have issues with it, because primarily, I'd, I'd like to know, I've got grandkids that visit me all the time. Now, do we have any way of knowing if there are sex offenders on the homeless group that's there? That's one issue, okay? The second is, is there gonna be a shower facilities in there? It sounds like there is gonna be. Or, and sleeping. And, and then the fairgrounds, which is just up the street from us, every day, there is a group that are sitting in, under the picnic table, the homeless people. I can't let my grandkids go up there, because I don't know who they are. And there's a school across the street, a charter school on Main, that bring their kids across that road every day for a physical education class. And they go to the fairgrounds, and they march like little troopers really neatly up and down the street. Those kids are gonna also be subjected to possible sex offenders, which is not what we need. I think this facility is a good idea, but not at this location. I'm thinking someplace like an industrial location, like, what's wrong with that, the airport? There are a lot of warehouse facilities there, and those buildings there look to me like that could be a place where you could have homeless-type showering and living. And it just seems to me to be the more logical place. And the following thing, the final thing I'd like to say is, would any of you like to have this building, this homeless facility, next to your house? Think about that. I don't want it next to mine. I don't wanna be thinking about it when I leave, that somebody's gonna break into my house, or whatever. So that's my final saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Robert and Michael Janica?
Michelle.
Michelle, I'm sorry, and Michelle?
It's okay.
Michelle's here?
My husband's not with me.
Oh, okay, Michelle.
So, my name's Michelle Janica, and my, the back of my house looks at that right there. So I was kind of concerned as well about location. I work at Spectrum, and I'm all for trying to help, but living where I'm living, from the recession, when I had to move into that house, it was our office, it's exhausting, living there, trying to keep up with what I deal with. I've had SMI patients sleep behind my shed. You know, I know them by name, and I'm like, can you move along, you know, so-and-so? I've had people, you know, using the back waterway, which is like at the end of this, it's a fence, and then our fence and the water, when the floods happen, kind of goes through and fills up the alley right there. Hoopman, trash, using back there. We've tried to go back there and clean it out, and needles, and baggies, and you name it. I'm just, I'm concerned that there isn't another place for it. And what if we go to sell our house? It's like, we already kind of gotten the short end of the stick, kind of, from the recession, having to move there. And I'm up all the time, because our dogs are barking, I'm constantly yelling at people, I'm calling the police. It's just exhausting. So I'm just concerned of the location of it. 'Cause it's like a little cesspool right there, it's, it ends, and DES back parking lot, and people are always back there doing stuff anyway, in that, where it stops, where Rose's house is, right there. And then everything that I deal with on the other sides, I'm just, I'm concerned about the location.
Okay.
I can't see. It's like, I'm just concerned that we can't find another location that could be in the middle of town, but not so close to people's homes. There's a whole lot of stuff already. And I'm fine to call the police if I have to, more, it's just, it's just really upset about the location of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Rose? And Rose is also in opposition?
I know, yes.
Yes, your name for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Rose Unruh, and I live at 324 South 15th Street. The proposed drop-in center is directly across the street from my home. And I've owned that home since 1996, I've seen a lot of changes. One was the construction of the Department of Economic Security next door. And that use has brought a lot of concerns for me. It's brought a lot of problems for me. And, and I, I have a lot of concerns about this use. Not that it is not needed, but, but what goes with it. And I will say that I am very happy to see people that use the services are here tonight. That, to me, I have no doubt that the people here in this building right now, in support of it, and, and that are using the services, are following the rules. Okay? That's not my concern. It is not my concern of the people who are finding a use from this service. I think that's wonderful. My problem is what happens- Um, my problem is what happens outside that building. And what I heard from Raina, and I know that she has rules, um, but she, and she's assured me that she has rules, but those that are under probably drugs or alcohol, um, the influence of, would not be allowed to enter the, the shelter, for instance. So, where will they be? Right? Um, she, she's already told you that she has no control over the alley behind the current building right now. So, that's not something I'm gonna wanna hear, cause I live there. I've faced the building. I've seen ten uses in that building over the last twenty years. Um, and nobody seemed to really be, be able to kind of stay there. Number one, let's look at the building. It is a mess. It is not intended for people. They had a school in there, and, and I was concerned for the children in there. It's just not a people building. Um, the reason why, and nobody's saying it, but I will, it, that they're not using the back part of the building is, is it's really kind of inhabitable. It's not, it's not intended for people to be in there all the time. It's a railroad car. Um, and, and it's probably, you know, the word fire trap kind of comes to mind. Um, number one, the shelter does not allow for children. So, the most vulnerable population is out of luck for these services for this particular use. That's, you know, to me, that's kind of a concern. Um, number two, we have a big affordable housing issue in this area, and it seems to me that, um, like the mention of transitional housing, affordable housing, those are really services that we need before we need a shelter-type situation. We have a business center right across the street here that has the computers, we have the library that has computers, internet. Those types of services are already available for daytime use. Um, I'd also, uh, taking from an article that I, uh, pulled that, From Care to Causes on December tenth, two thousand seventeen, it is inevitable when different people are using a, um, a bed over and over again, you know, um, you have, you can have problems, you know, like bedbugs, or lice, or contagious diseases, you know, like in-
About thirty seconds, Rose.
Like influenza. I have ten seconds?
About thirty seconds.
Okay. Um, all right, think about it. Uh, I'd also like to know why the current location is no longer an option. Um, in talking with the police, they have had problems with that alley. Yes, I'm gonna admit that some of that is from Circle K, but, you know, as the director said, she has no control back there, so if people are causing problems, um, that, you know, not much is gonna be done. I hope, um, to sell my home in the next couple of years, it's a possibility. I'd like to know if, who can assure me that the value of my property is not gonna be impacted by this use? And if it is impacted negatively, who should I present with the bill?
Thank you.
Um, lastly, and I know the gentleman said it, but I want you to consider this very careful when voting for this project. Please vote as if this center is going in across the street from your home.
Thank you, Rose.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other slips. Are there any other people? Ed, would you fill out a slip, please?
I thought you were out of the room, sorry.
Oh, yeah, come on up. Okay. And your name, please.
My name is Emily Janicek. Um, I am just a concerned citizen that's low income as well. I do have housing. Took me four years after being homeless for various reasons. Um, I see people benefiting from the drop-in center because I personally will take people who, to municipal court to get the terms of their probation better, a better understanding of, um, take them to Spectrum if their terms of probation are certain things for prior charges. Wes who spoke, Daniel who spoke, and Brian, who doesn't feel comfortable speaking, have all made progress within the past four weeks alone, as far as employment, obtaining social security cards, identification, and things that will allow them to no longer be homeless and get on their feet. I know that, um, stimulating economic growth is a big deal in the city of Cottonwood, and I don't understand why we wouldn't invest in the people that are here and are willing to get back on their feet and be able to pay taxes and contribute to the stimulation of the economic growth. There is no control over that back alley at the Coalition because that's not part of the property. I, however, lived at thirteen South Fifteenth Street for two years. Um, two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen, which is exactly behind the Coalition. There's been people drinking there for years. There's been people getting arrested there for years. I myself had the police call on me in that alley in two thousand and twelve. That, the drop-in didn't track those people. Okay?
They're already there.
Those people were already there. And what we're doing is, what they're doing is providing a service to help people get on their feet, to be citizens. Houses get condemned, houses go on fire. Not everybody is a degenerate like a lot of these people have been treated. There are circumstances that happen. People get kicked out of assisted living because Medicare no longer pays. Sixty-two-year-old disabled woman who has a Section Eight voucher is homeless because there are no private renters that accept Section Eight, and waiting lists for elderly, sixty-two, on SSDI, one to two years for those senior housing and other hut housing, which is one or two apartment complexes, I believe. So, I am in favor of this location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, you may, ma'am. Kelly's come up.
I just wanted to say that there's clearly already a problem in that neighborhood, that that the alley behind it and DES, and Rose even has pictures of people sleeping by her dumpster. So, there's already a problem. Us having the homeless drop-in center there is not gonna bring more people to the area. It's gonna give them a place to be inside, where they'll be, where they'll be monitored, rather than hanging outside in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I'm out of line, but-
That's fine, don't worry about it.
Uh, my name is Shirley DeValt.
When you get the microphone. There you go, dear.
My name is Shirley DeValt, and I am currently in negotiations to purchase the property that we're looking at. Um, should this become part of the homeless Coalition's home, um, I will do absolutely everything in my power to make sure that it works. I can only do so much. I can see creating a wall off of that property to keep things a little bit clearer for you. I'm sorry, I know you're upset, but I'm willing to try now. I am so sorry.
You didn't talk to us, ma'am. Ma'am, ma'am, you're dressing us.
I can't do that. I told you, I'm not a liar.
I know.
Anyways, and once again, I might not even get this property. You know, you know, real estate is not over till the fat lady sings. So, but if so, I will try and be part of the solution, not part of the problem.
Thank you very much. All right, now, we're gonna close the meeting to, uh, the public. Um, one of the conditions, Goffler, and you can, Billy, if I'm out of line here, the Commissioner, Commission actions and findings, Section D, call in for number six, be compatibility with surrounding uses. Proposed use shall be compatible with surrounding uses in the vicinity, respect to intensity of activity, times of use, scale of buildings, anticipated traffic, parking requirements, architectural, and site improvements, landscaping, outdoor lighting, and other property development standards. I guess we have some concerns, uh, would be, be a consideration that we should be, think about. It would, even though this is C1 zone, this particular street is residential. The properties, except for cleared out at the end of Burge, you're at Burge Fifteenth, there's, you know, there's residents next door, apartments across the street, Rose's house across the street, directly across the street. It's more of a residential nature. I think it's something that would be open for discussion for the commission on that particular section.
Is that your question?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, that's, not only it's within your jurisdiction, but it's actually a required finding that you need to make in order to issue the, the CUP. You need to make the findings in the section you recited. Um, you need to make findings on, on a number, in a number of areas, uh, including the compatibility with surrounding uses.
Yes, uh, I guess I have a, the staff report indicates, uh, that it's compatible with mixture of surrounding uses in the area. Uh, I guess I'm questioning whether that's really, you know, that's up for discussion, I think. Uh, that, the, we have the right to discuss and argue and disagree with that statement.
The staff report comes to you, uh, part of the agenda. You hold the meeting, you open the floor to the public.
Right.
Uh, then the commission discusses it and makes findings.
Yeah, and that, that finding could be what our finding is, not what staff's finding is.
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay. Just wanna make sure that, that clarity is there for, for all of us to think about and, and discuss. Based on the comments we've, we've heard tonight and the testimony, I think it's an important, uh, consideration. Mr. Hart, I will start with you, sir.
I'm sort of at the point where I'd really like to have some time to think about this. I mean, there's, there seems to be some conflict between intent, you know, what people intend to do and the reality of what happens. I'd like, you know, like, I, like I said, I'd like to have some time to think about it, rather than just trying to come to, you know, a cut and dry decision tonight. That's where I'm at.
Uh, I struggle with this, and I struggle with it, um, because I've seen success come out of it. One of the people in, currently in the galley, um, I have kind of developed a working personal relationship with, and believe that that person is taking some very, very good steps in the right direction. In fact, speaking of the things, getting those things done, the social security card, those kind of things, and we're moving in the right direction, I struggle with this because the services you provide for that, for that, for that community are irreplaceable. But I struggle with the location here. And I guess I'm not overly sure that this is the best location for it. So, I'll leave it with that right now.
Mr. Norwood? Yes, sir. My thoughts.
I ha- I have the same, the same issues with the, with the location. And listening to both the positive and the negative sides of, uh, the discussion this evening, it's clear to me that there is a need, but I'm not positive that this is the right place for that need. I'm also up in the air, but at the same time, I struggle with thinking that in all the negatives that, that you can come up with, those negatives really don't apply to this, this application because it's not there in that location right now. On the positive side, I think that there's perhaps a benefit to the area if this homeless, uh, facility was there, because it seems to me that the people organizing this and operating this system, um, put a lot of mechanisms in place to police the area. So, there's a strong possibility that some of the problems could disappear rather than be magnified. But I, again, still struggle with the positives and the negatives. I'd like to think a little bit longer about it. I think, I feel like I don't wanna be rushed into a decision tonight. I would personally feel, giving us a little bit more time to think about it and to weigh, and make the right decision for these people and for the town. I'm not being negative on it, I'm not being positive right now. I see good. I see some issues. I'm tending toward, maybe it's better to have it than not, but I wanna think about it a little bit longer, like Mr. Hart. And I think Mr. Dow also, I can't speak for him.
Mr. Dow?
It all comes down to me. Well, yeah, I guess, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to preempt. You know, obviously, this becomes a, this starts as a very simple issue and becomes very difficult. And I would simply say that, uh, having a father-in-law who died in an alley in Phoenix of a cocaine overdose, I wish he had a daytime center to go to. Knowing that my kids had to move to Phoenix because they can't afford to live here anymore, I wish there was better ways around it. It's not easy. Knowing that I had to leave council because I couldn't afford to live here anymore, and it took me two and a half years, or whatever it was, to buy it back in town and find a a happenstance to get back here? You know, I heard the question, to vote on this like it was your, across the street from your house. I would simply say, vote on this as if this was your brother. Vote on this as if this was your mother, your sister, your child. You know, I did some time in the council, and I made plenty of very unpopular votes. And that's okay. I didn't get elected to get re-elected. I got elected to do a job that nobody else really wants to do. I'm gonna say it right now, I'm for it. Uh, I'm sorry if it's negative for somebody, but, um, if we can't take the responsibility upon ourselves to do what we have to do, how can we expect a homeless person to do the same thing? And it's the same thing. I would simply say, I, I was interested, like, a lot of times, they get referred to as "the homeless." They are people first, their condition of living is second. I understand it's easy for me to say because I'm not there, I don't live in the area. I have a halfway house across the street from me right now. Ambulance shows up there every once in a while, and, uh, sometimes the guys on the front porch are a little goofy, and they wave at me all the time. But I would put this in my backyard if I could in two seconds. If it saved a life. If it kept somebody from freezing. If it kept somebody from ODing. So, I'll just leave it at that. I would like to ask the attorney, uh, is there any situation where the city would be liable for somebody's loss of property adjacent to this based upon our decision? Now, if that's too complicated or sticky of a question, I apologize for throwing you on the spot.
It's complicated, it's awkward, it's not the kind of thing attorneys usually discuss with their clients.
That's what I do. I'm good at complicated and awkward.
Oh, yeah, no, we have a history. Thank you. I, I'd rather answer a different question.
Sure.
And, uh, because you, you'd mentioned the council, and it certainly is the commission's prerogative, um, to table this and contemplate it, uh, and maybe have other commissioners here and get more information.
I'm okay with that, too.
But I'd, I'd remind you that, that you're not necessarily the final decision-makers on this because there's a right of appeal from any aggrieved citizen or the applicant. So, maybe, and maybe you wanna put this to the applicant, uh, maybe what the applicant would rather see, maybe what everybody would rather see, is that you make a decision up or down so that either party can get to the final decision-maker after you make your decision and your findings.
If we table it, that, that would nullify the appeal, wasn't it?
Right. Then, then the process sort of jams up here.
Okay.
And the council doesn't get it yet, and that may create some hard, some additional procedural hardships in addition to the, the substantive ones that it looks like one set of people or the other might, might endure.
Could I say that another way?
You mean in English?
Yeah.
You might want to go ahead and make a decision, because there is, because under the conditional use permit rules, there is a right of appeal to the city council. And if you don't make a decision tonight, then that right of appeal doesn't ripe.
And, I have one last thing, because I've already sure stuck my foot in it and gotten everybody angry at me in one way or another. I will have to say, and I, but the, these people would rather not be here either. I know that there was, earlier this year, there was a selection process for some grant, and I know that, I saw this room jam packed, I drove by and I saw this room jam packed flowing out with representatives here begging, lobbying, pleading, asking for some slice of or that grant to find a place that would be more adequate. And then, not to disparage what the decision was, that didn't happen. And we have a really nice master plan for a park. I just want to leave it at that. Nobody wants to be in this situation, and they try not to be, and they're still trying not to be, and maybe next year, if a grant comes around, we'll all consider that and maybe vote or show up in support of that. Because if they're not in your backyard, they're in somebody else's backyard. And if they're in somebody else's and they're not there, they're not there. It's called nimby. I found out when you get elected, 10% people love you for no real reason. 10% hate you for no real reason. The other 80% could care less until it's in their backyard. You know, that's just the way it is, that's the way it goes, and if they're not in your backyard, where? In a warehouse, up by a industrial zone, you know, I don't know, but I just, I know that they don't want to be there, and they've tried not to be there. So I'll leave it at that.
Rihanna, you step back up, I have a question with regard to potential alternatives, what you've looked at and why you chose this property other than location. You want to get up to the podium and give a comment, please?
This property was brought to us as a viable alternative, because where we are now is simply too small a space to accommodate, I mean, people sit on the floor sometimes. We don't have enough seating. We have two more computers that we can't put out, because we don't have room to put it out. This location, being right by DES, it's a C1 area. It is zone C1 all, all around it. And it seems like the perfect, especially with DES being right there, you know, for people to go to, that we could send them, you know, you need food stamps here, go over here.
You haven't considered any other locations?
No.
Or found any buildings that would be?
We haven't found any other buildings that are suitable. And it's also right by Cherry Street.
Yeah.
Which is where the Alcoholics Anonymous and the NA meetings are. So there are many, many, you know, it's by a bus stop, it's, you know, there are many reasons why we chose this property. And there really isn't.
Thank you very much.
A lot of places.
I, I will just say that, I believe stipulation number five, the City of Cotwood reserves the right to revoke the conditional use permit if the city use creates an, your immediate public safety problem as determined by the city. So I would ask you, council, is that something that could be revoked at any point in time if this got out of hand?
Sure, based on that stipulation?
Based on that stipulation, at any point in time, even with approval tonight, three months down the road, we're like, oh, we gotta put a stop, because of whatever the situation happens to be, it could be revoked.
The decision always, tonight, three months from now, always has to be reasonable and, and not for an unlawful reason. And, and what I'm hearing up on the dais, and what I'm hearing even from the, the comments from the audience, is everybody is, is sincere and, and expressing their, their honest opinions to you. So as long as that carries forward to any ultimate decision, if it's a revocation decision down the road, I'm not concerned about the, the city's exposure. I mean, sure, anybody can bring a claim, you know, and advance a, a theory for why the city engaged, you know, in something compensable or, or unlawful or reversible, but I'm not terribly concerned right now.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I bring something up?
No, no, sir.
All right.
The, I think this is a fantastic, you know, what you've been doing is just really, and I second Mr. Dow's about, you know, it's such a great service, one we sorely need in this community. Glad to hear we're seeing positive results from it. My problem is not with the center. It's with the location in this particular neighborhood. And I understand the positives, I think those are, those are legitimate positive comments about location next to DES or whatever. There's already a problem apparently in the neighborhood with the homeless. You will attract more, because they come for your service. And, you know, like you say, you control them, when they're there, they're inside. And I think that's great around, you know, in the smoking area, they're not going to bother anybody. I, I'm having a problem with the findings that it has a compatible use. And has nothing to do with, we have to treat everybody equally. And, you know, I, I just really struggle with, and it's not because it's in my, not because it's my backyard, I, I just think that where you're at, you're on a commercial street. You're, you're, easy identifiable. Maybe you can control things, you know, you have pretty good control. I am concerned up here, I think you're backing off the main street. There's apparently homeless people up and down that street, and they're camping out and doing things now, which are causing, you know, consternation with the residents, and I think rightly so, if that's what's happening. So my, my struggle is one of, in our findings, is it really compatible to the surroundings? Although it may be zone C1, this is a residential area in the neighborhood at the present time. And I'm not sure, and I have compassion with the people, I, I wish I had an alternative to say, gee, I could put you right here, you know? But that's my struggle with this particular conditional use permit. I think the number five stipulation would, would cover the concern of being detrimental to health, safety, well-being of the area, well, at least to the safety and the public safety and health, the city can't control that, has the means to control it through their police efforts, if there's, you know, if there's a problem there. But that's where I stand. I, I would agree with council that, I think we need to vote up or down, I'd like, I could respect your thoughts about having more time to probably consider this, our level. There is a process where we, we can approve, and they don't approve our stipulations, they can appeal that to the council. We can disapprove it, and they can file within 15 days to the city council to override our disapproval, if that's what we do. So, I think we need to, I would agree with council, if we can arrive at an up or down decision tonight. I wish we had, there are the two commissioners with us tonight as well, but we do have a good quorum, and so, to get the ball rolling, Commissioner Dowling, would you like to make a motion and we'll?
Certainly.
From there, sir.
I will make this motion. I move to hold a vote on, for, for approval or disapproval of PCU 19-003, Verde Valley Homeless Coalition.
Can you stop me for a second?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to approve or disapprove?
I will, I will make a motion to approve PCU 19-003, Verde Valley Homeless Coalition Relocation, with the following stipulations. The project is developed in conformance of the development plans as approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission at the June 17, 2019 meeting. That the project conforms to the Code Review Board comments dated May 9, 2019. A certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of conditions shall be issued prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. That the applicant provide email and phone contact information to all property tenants and owners within a 300-foot radius. The City of Cotwood reserves the right to revoke the conditional use permit if the use creates an irredeemable public safety problem as determined by the city. And I believe, were there any other additional stipulations that we wanted to place on this?
Can I make one comment, just that?
Yes.
Some wording be in there that included the cold weather shelter, that that would be operating at this location?
Okay. Stipulations would include the operation of this facility as a cold weather shelter when the temperature drops below 35 degrees, as it already is approved on the previous location.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Dow, second that motion. Commissioner Dowling, Brenda, roll call.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if the, the commission would indulge me for a, a second round of, of voting, what you need to do, I think to create the record here for the council, is, is that staff presented to you certain findings, and you have to make, and I'm going to draw your attention based on your discussion, to subsections 6A, B, and E, with section 302D of the conditional use permit process. So, I, I'd like you to make a record of the fact that with that stipulation number five, that you are finding tonight, that all those findings that you need to make in A, B, and E are met, subject to that. And that includes the location, size, design, and operational characteristics of the proposed use shall not be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the surrounding properties or occupants, nor be substantially or permanently injurious to neighboring property, the compatibility one that you've talked about at some length, and that under E, the proposed use shall not have or create negative impacts on surrounding properties or uses in the area through the creation of, there's a list of things, ends with, or other injurious or noxious impact. So you've implicitly, and maybe you should explicitly make those findings as part of your record.
All right. Under E?
Is that verbiage in all of our books, or is that something?
No, it's in it all.
It's in your, your staff communication.
It's in, it's in the ordinance, yeah. The problem I had with the, with the staff didn't quite, I was wondering if there would be discussion on those points. The, with E, that seems to be more of fumes, dust, smoke, excessive noise, whatever, that doesn't really talk about drawing people in that are maybe lording the area or whatever, this could be a magnet to that.
Mr. Chair, it does not, but there's also the disjunctive or other injurious or noxious impacts.
Or other, okay.
And, and is, are those like-kind impacts? No. And I, I think the other sets of conditions you need to find, you know, cover what you're talking about, I just want to make sure for the council's benefit that your, the reasons for your, your recommendation tonight are, are clear, and that the record is clear.
Okay.
Because this may be reviewed by council, it may be reviewed further.
All right. Now, the procedure here, if we, if we approve this, that which we did our first vote, it just goes to council for discussion, it does not go there for a vote. In other words, it, it's been approved.
So you, you, you've approved it, it would take somebody appealing it in order for this not to be the final decision?
And who has the right to appeal?
Any citizen, well, the applicant obviously isn't going to appeal it, but any, any citizen who is unhappy with your decision.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir.
The council could, could still disapprove this, right?
If there's appeal.
Not unless it's appealed. The, the council does not have jurisdiction to review this.
Okay.
Unless somebody appeals it.
So one of the neighbors could file an appeal?
Correct.
Within 15?
Within 15 days, thank you.
Everybody, on, everybody understand those three stipulations of the compatibility and surrounding uses? Location, design, operation characteristics?
Whatever you're comfortable with. I, I, you know, I've, I've done enough talking that I think the record is clear, but it's really, this is supposed to be the commission's findings, not your attorney's interpretation of what you found.
So you just want an individual, do we believe that we've met those conditions?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I start? I, I believe we've met those conditions, and I, and I base that on, it was met previously in the same zoning area, half mile away. I believe we've met those conditions, seriously.
Mr. Hart?
I agree with the gentleman to my right.
Right, Mr. Dow?
I concur.
I concur.
Okay, I would concur, so we, we can, does that need to be part of the motion?
No, no, I think, I think we're, we're good.
We just need to redefine what the staff?
We can have an informed discussion with council about what you decided, and now why.
Okay.
If it is appealed.
All right, yeah, yeah, it is, all right, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, no, all right, so we're okay on the rule? All right, so it is unanimously approved? Good luck. Commissioner Dow, you be in, he's going to be your liaison with the police department?
I already, I already am to some extent.
Yes. But he's the guy, if you have problems, he'll have his personal number, right? Thank you, and just remember what our concerns were, the neighbors, please be diligent in your, thank you very much. All right, next item of the business, it looks like discussion items, what we pulled a discussion item, we had for the night?
Right, so there is an any. There is an any.
All right, just hold on a second, let's, let's throw out.
Trust me, I, I think I probably know more about all that than you really cares. That's good.
Go ahead, we'll wait for you. You want to discuss all that?
What's that?
Want to discuss all that?
Well, it wasn't it, it's not in my book. I'm not sure what's going on with that, I don't think.
Well, they were going to have a?
Oh, okay.
There's a ham thing going on.
Mr. Chairman? There will be one update from the city manager.
Excuse me?
There will be one update from the city manager.
All right, give us just a second, till Commissioner Dow gets back, we'll have a, since we're sort of shorthand, it'd be nice to hear all your comments. And we appreciate, and, Mr. Rodriguez, always good to see you, sir, again.
Good to see you, sir.
Always good to have you too, too. Will you just be a second, and we'll get on, and any, how about any, well? Can you just be a second and we'll, you know, and any, how about any, well, you don't have any informational reports?
Yeah.
So, we're not gonna discuss the hemp ordinance?
No, no, not tonight.
Never?
No, not tonight.
Mr. Chairman, Ron Corbin, City Manager, thank you for indulging, I just have one comment. The last commission meeting, the city got kind of raked over a little bit on our maintenance of a well site out over near Kinder Heights, is that the right one?
Yes.
And I just, we, we went up there and our utilities department put up some fencing, wood fencing to help with the noise and reduce the noise, and sent some landscaping people out there, and so our utilities crews are working on all of our well sites, at least those that are visible from other developments, and taking a share, so we're still working through issues with that permit or whatever the process is, but as far as the comments for the well site out there at Kinder Heights that the, that we received a few complaints on, we've gone out and tried to address those. Went out with the team and visited it on Friday, and it, it's helped significantly.
Well, that's good, yeah. And it's what?
It helped.
Yeah.
It helped reduce the noise, so they put a fence around two and a half sides of the well. If you're right there, you can still hear a little bit of humming, but I think by the time you put in some landscaping around the houses, it should be all but gone.
It should be gone.
Yeah.
And...
We're trying.
You'll, you'll continue to give consideration to Amity Street.
Yeah, I hate to rat out my city engineer, but I texted him and got no response, so I'll have to follow up with him in the morning, and maybe we can put it even on the agenda so we can discuss it at the, at the next meeting, just so I don't forget, and there's a little accountability there with me and the city engineer.
Just to add that, currently, that street is in functional classification as a street, so we have to deal with it as it is, but we'll look at, to different...
I just don't know what the plans are, and so I'll find out from the city engineer. We've got lots of stuff going on around there, so, you know, we'll, I just don't know.
Right.
I think the city cares. We cared about the junkyard, so we bought it.
Oh, I know, that was, that was one of the greatest things that ever happened here.
I'm trying to get us more parking down there, is probably one of my biggest goals that we're working on down there, but we'll, we'll see how that comes to fruition.
Right, good. All right.
Thank you, Chair.
Is there anything else tonight? All, if anybody else has anything, Mr. Dowling, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second it. All in favor, aye.
Aye. Gotta go see if my key car's been keyed.